Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are also glad Colin's joined us. Hey Colin.
How you doing everyone?
So today you guys, we are talking about something that a lot of us have on the mind a lot of the time, especially if you're someone who has ever used Facebook to try to keep in touch with your customers and build community. I know that this is something that we've covered quite a bit over the years and it's been a while since we've brought this up. I think that once everybody, you know, started working from home during COVID, I think a lot of us started spending more time on our devices, trying to build groups and get into a community and really live into that on social media. And what we've found, not just since 2020, but since quite a bit longer ago than that, is that social media is really kind of a difficult place to build a community where you serve your customers. And what we have here with Get Oiling is everything that you need in one place to stay in touch and more importantly, to do so on your terms. So today, what we're going to be talking about is building your own kitchen table community where you can have kitchen table conversations and it's going to take place in your own website, your own space where you can work the way that you see fit with the people that you love working with. As you're coming in, let us know where you're coming in from. Let us know if you're maybe new to Get Oiling, if this is new to you, a new concept to you. We would love to welcome you here and say hello. This is a live call that we offer every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time and it's for all brand partners anywhere in the world. Get Oiling is a platform that supports your business no matter where you are and no matter how you grow. We've got email, we've got text, we've got private member areas, your own custom website if you want it. We also have built-in ready-made compliant, ready-to-share marketing websites as well. Really just everything except the VO, right? And it's all in one place and we show you on these calls how to use the platform. And we're really honored to have done that for the last 10 plus years now. Now we have some trainings to get into today and I will be doing a lot of screen sharing and kind of showing you some ways that we can go about using Get Oiling to move off of Facebook on purpose to create this kitchen table. And I promise you that it is so simple that you could get your sort of starter version of this done today. All right, I do want to say upfront with Get Oiling, all of our plans are just a little bit different. We do have seed and starter plans that are great for you if you're a brand new brand partner and you're kind of just getting your feet wet with using tech tools to grow and support your young living business. If you want to follow along with what I'm going to be sharing with you here today, you're going to need the member area features that Get Oiling has. This starts with our basic and higher plans and the good news is, is that these start at $1 for your first month. So if you are interested in getting started, it's really easy to do so. And of course, there is no contract or obligation required there. So we're going to pop out a video, you guys again, keep it going in the chat. We're excited to see you guys here today. I would actually really love to hear from you guys if you are already serving your customers outside of Facebook groups, right? What does that look like for you? Welcome you guys. It looks like we've got London, Phoenix, Alabama, Arkansas, Dallas, Texas, Virginia, Panama. Welcome you guys. We're really thrilled to have you here today. So yeah, so we're going to talk today about how we can get off of Facebook on purpose, specifically where it comes to communicating with our customers, right? Facebook is a fantastic place to reach new people and to make friends and to network, right? It's a social networking platform and it is still something that we obviously advocate for and recommend that you use for networking purposes to go find new people that you can share with and just stay friendly with those that you have. But where you want to talk to your people about what's going on in your world, we gotta get them off the platform, right? That's the key. And so we're going to talk about how we can do that here today. So today we are going to talk about first, if we don't know already, why Facebook groups aren't really reliable anymore for education and community. We're going to talk about how a Get Oiling member area will give you a private and peaceful space to connect and we'll give some simple steps to get started with creating and organizing your new online home for your people. We'll talk about best practices for both small and large teams as well. There are some different sort of ways that you might want to approach this depending on, you know, whether or not Young Living is your full-time business, is your main squeeze versus whether or not this is something that you're just getting started or you kind of run on the side. And as always, we have live help and Q and A. I have Kelly signed up for a review today where we're going to be working together on troubleshooting some contact stuff. So if you guys have questions as we're going through today's content, I want to invite you. We've got a lot of folks on the call here today. Please add those questions to the Q and A here live in Zoom. You got two of the smartest people I know here on the call, including the guy that built the platform, who can help answer those questions as we're going through our content here today. And of course, if it's something that really demands looking at stuff together, that's an option as well. Just let us know, put that into the Q and A. And if you're watching this as a replay, come join us live so that you can ask those questions, get hands-on help. With Get Oiling, you are never alone in growing your business. You not only have the incredible community of brand partners from all over the world, of which everyone who works on our team is included, everyone here oils, everyone here loves this company. But you've got the support of the folks who built the platform, right? And the people who know how to use it, no matter what project, big or small, you're interested in. We talk about it on these calls. We can come up with trainings that fit what you're looking for. If you don't see a use case scenario that you need help with, guys, be sure to sign up on this list and just let us know. We respond. We're real people and we love hearing from you guys and getting to know you. If you'd like to work on something together on this call, this says website review. That's the URL that you're going to go to, but this isn't limited to websites. If you are interested in starting your member area and maybe you're stuck on a step, you want a little extra help. The second half of all of these calls we do on Thursdays are open to you to be able to sign up for free to work one-on-one like I would be doing with Kelly a little bit later here today. But if you'd like to hand off the work to someone else to have it done for you, that is also a great option. Our team is full of talented, capable folks who can do things like design and layout and migration and set up lots of great options there. Go to getoiling.com/concealers to learn more and get a free quote. All right, so let's talk really quickly. Actually, everybody, if you are in the chat here, pop your hand up, let me know, do you have personally, do you have a Facebook group that you use to serve your customers or have you in the past? Curious like how many of us are still like, yep, we've got them. Yep. It is a, it's a free and easy thing to set up and it's a perfectly fine first step, right? It's just not quite what it used to be. Think like, you know, 2014, 2013, even, you know, maybe getting closer to 2015. Groups were a great place to keep in touch, right? But they don't work like they used to. Fewer people are seeing our posts, right? And a lot of people never actually see your posts, even if they're active members in a group. This might be the worst thing about Facebook groups is that you want to make an announcement and you want to make sure that everybody who's in that group sees that announcement. You make a post in that group and I promise you, it's going to be a quarter or fewer of the people in that group that are going to see that post because it depends how they see that post, depends on what time they're online, whether they actually visit the group, if other people have commented since then. There is no guarantee that everyone is going to see everything that you have to say. And that is just due to the nature of the platform. It's how it's built. It's built for the scroll. It's for moving past things continually. And that's why it also demands of us a lot more work than we ought to be putting in to get visibility, right? Because it really wants you to be feeding the machine that feeds the scroll for visitors, right? So those important messages, the videos, they disappear fast in the feed. Lives now go away a lot more quickly than they used to. So if you go live in your group, that video does not become long-term content for your group. They're not hosting that video anymore. That's also really important. And your wellness education, you guys, I mean, how many times have you made a post about something? The way you worded it, you felt like it was completely innocuous, right? Young Living would have considered it compliant, but maybe it got flagged, right? By the social network algorithms, maybe it got removed, censored, whatever. Have you experienced that before? It's crazy how they lock down on this stuff, even when you're sharing something that's objectively scientifically true, right? Now, the wild thing is about this whole process is that we go in and we pour our time, our effort, our hearts and souls into trying to build a community on this platform only to understand often, once it's, you know, past the point of no return, that we don't actually own it. That group you build on Facebook, it's not yours, right? If you don't own the ground that it stands on, you don't own it. It can, it can, it can be taken away from you, right? And you don't get to control how it works, right? So we don't advocate for building on quicksand. We want you on solid ground. So why not do that on your own website? When you have your group in Get Oiling, you can actually know whether or not someone has seen something that you've posted because you can send out emails and determine who is open and who hasn't, right? When you're using social media, you don't own the list of people who are in that group. You don't own the content that you put into that group and you don't truly own the group itself. So your message really does deserve a home. So when your words, the things you're saying, the images, the videos that you're posting, when they keep vanishing, whether that be for real because you're censored or just out of view forever, because that's how the algorithm works, your people lose touch or maybe more importantly, they never actually get the experience you wanted them to in the first place. So you can bring your community somewhere calm and focused away from distractions, right? Your Get Oiling member area will allow you to share freely and safely without censorship. We are not monitoring, obviously, we highly advocate that you familiarize yourself with compliance from Young Living and ensure that you are conducting yourself compliantly and certainly reach out to the compliance team with Young Living to ensure that you're clear on what those things are if you ever have questions. But we are never going to be the ones that tell you what you can and can't say, right? That's between you, your people and Young Living, right? So you get to have your space to say what you need to say, have your kitchen table, as Mary likes to say, and this is your place to have it, your kitchen table online, okay? So let's talk about what a member area is. Real quick, just Tina over here in the chat says, "Watching a royal crown diamond lose everything this summer after 13 years of building on Facebook was terrifying. Big wake-up call. She got it back, but she had to hire a legal team and get politicians involved." That is insane, right? So I don't want that to happen to anyone. I mean, think about it. The heart and soul behind this company is to improve the lives of others. No one who is working in that way should have to go through something like that, right? All right, now let's talk about how we can familiarize ourselves with the structure, right? Because we're moving off of one platform to another, which is what we're doing here. It's just you get to own what you put into ours. It's important that you know what the structures are that you're working with. So a member area is a password-protected space for your customers, for your team, for your community. And this is something that you could provide this login to anyone. You could make it possible for anyone from anywhere to be able to create a login into your member area. You can also make it so that only very specific people, so say just the people from your VO file, have access to this space, right? Now you get to decide who gets access and what they see. And inside you can post lessons. So this could be complex or it could be wildly simple, right? So you can have videos, you can have images, links, downloads, and each section stays organized. So information is easy to find later. So I actually want to show you guys in the, I want to actually show you a Get Oiling member area here really quickly so that you can see just an example of what this could look like, right? So this is Jane, this is our dummy account. This is a member area, okay? And inside of this member area, we have these things called vaults. Now she's got a resolution reset, separate community from her regular one where she serves her people. She has a free community. She's got a customer community. She's got a brand partner community. She may also be a coach who sells her expertise, maybe a coaching program or a course. And anyway, there's lots of different ways that you can create these spaces. So what I want you to kind of imagine here is that if you were to go into creating a group like we'll be talking about here today, it begins with a private space on your website, right? So here's getoiling.com/janelle. This is her Get Oiling website, right? So she has a custom website with Get Oiling. There's her homepage. But then she also has this private member area that is behind a password, right? So people have to log in to be able to see what's here. Now people who only have access to, say for instance, her member area for customers will only see this member, this vault here for the customers, right? Maybe they're a part of this one and this one, et cetera. So you get to decide who can access what, whether they pay for it or you choose what audience gets access to those things. Now let's go into the actual space where our engagement happens here, right? Now this is set up very basically. You can do a lot more than this visually. These can all be images instead of texts and you could put video up here. You can say whatever you'd like. But the idea here is that we want to provide a space where people can log in. They can quickly get information that they need because we want this to be reference, right? We want people to think about your, your community space for your oilers as a sort of living encyclopedia, discussion room, communication guide, right? Like we want people who are interested in learning something new about how to use product. We want them to be able to know that this is where they can go. If they don't find the answer here, then they can find a direction from here, right? So maybe it's you saying, here's where you can find more info, right? So there's lots of different options here that you can put in. I'm going to talk about more of these in detail. And real quick, I want to show you as well, because this is, this hasn't been updated in some time. But this, in this, this chat room here, this is where things off, take place just like they would in a Facebook group feed, right? It's separate from the content. And actually, if I refresh this here, you can see the recent activity. So anyone who's chatted recently in the discussion room, you're going to be able to see that recent activity over here on the right-hand side. But this is also, this noise is separate from our educational space, right? Where I might break things down into really, if you're going to get started with Young Living, you need to know about the starter collections. You need to know the basics of essential oils. While Young Living is different, you need to know about loyalty rewards. This obviously hasn't been updated in some time. You're going to need to know about really the major flagship products like Thieves and Ningsha, right? And then you can break these down into other topics. So this is actually an example of a pretty well-built-out platform. Let me come over here to our maybe All Things Thieves. This actually borrows content from Grow Workspace, which is great. So you can embed things like sways in here if you have them. If you, these are recipe cards and checklists here that you can include. So it's really just a great place to gather and display information in a way that is searchable. So people can search for what they're looking for or they could just go and, and ask questions, right? And that's just such a powerful, powerful thing. And it's better than just dumping everything into one feed like you have on Facebook, right? So everything can stay organized the way that you want to have it set up. So the information is easy to find later. So I want to encourage you, if you have a smaller team or you're just getting started with this, to take these things into account, right? So I want you to start simple. Create one space for your customers and don't worry about having everything that I just showed you, right? So all of those educational resources, even if you have them, you don't need to have everything perfectly in place to be able to build something that's useful. Because what a community is, is people first, right? We, I don't need you to build a mansion to invite people into. I want you to build a space where you plus one or you plus even a few or more than a few can have fellowship together, have conversations together. And you can basically use that as a starting point to begin building what the community wants and needs, right? So I want you to maybe add a class with the basics. So these would be things like how to place an order, why you want to use loyalty rewards, how to reach support in different markets. So really just think about you as a Young Living customer who has used Young Living for as long as you have, obviously consult your upline if you're unclear on some of these topics. But any of the sort of frequently asked questions, the ways that you maybe most often need to serve your people or the things that you wish that your customers knew, but they often come to you for. You want to put that into something like a class inside of your, inside of your member area. And this is something, especially if you have a larger team, eventually it's going to save you a ton of time. So I have one right here called Getting Started with Young Living. And what I did in here is I put, here's a, well, I put a video in there. That's actually just a dummy thing, sorry. But here, we've got, we've got screenshots and I've given instructions. So I'm saying, go to youngliving.com/vo and log in. And then on the next lesson, here's how to place an order, right? So we've got, you know, what it looks like inside the VO and these are screenshots inside as well, right? So again, just think about this from a logical perspective. It's going to be more important for you to have things like this in place at first than it is for you to be able to have encyclopedic, encyclopedic knowledge on different essential oils and their uses, right? I think that you really can meet their community, your community with their needs in terms of creating that use-based content. The most important things that they need to know are, can they log in? Can they edit their order? Why do they want to have loyalty rewards? Why is that so important? If you offer, if you offer regular calls with your customers, consults with your customers, scans with your customers, link that in here. This needs to be the most important thing that they go through first, right? This is their orientation, right? And you could even include things like, you know, getting started with sharing Young Living and building a business, right? You could absolutely put something like that in here. Now I separate that from product education because these two things are very separate, right? Knowing how to use product and knowing how to actually order it, maintain your account, et cetera. These are different concepts. So I would split these potentially into different spaces. So those would be like the basics, right? How to order, what loyalty rewards are, how to get in touch with who you want to get in touch with to get what you want done. And then the absolute most important thing that you need to have is a discussion room, right? A discussion room where anybody who is here can come in and ask any question. If you do nothing today, other than set up a vault with a discussion room in it and invite your customers to join it and start talking and asking questions, you have won, right? That's the most important thing is for you to be able to have community, right? To be able to have space to communicate together. And so in here, people have the ability to post, of course, they can format their posts just like they do on social. You can add photos here, you can tag people. You as the administrator can even schedule posts into the future. And you can comment on each other's posts and tag each other in those comments as well, right? So if you want to put content in here to engage, that's fine. But where you are talking about product use, you actually have the ability to build depth and reference material inside of a separate class that you can use and start building out around oily education, right? So if you want to talk about particular product lines or you want to talk about cooking with oils, right? And talking about the, and this is again, just a Grow Workspace sway that we have in here, where you can see all of the different usage and safety and what vitality oils are, right? Or if you want oils from a particular perspective, if this is something that's important to you, you can put worksheets in, you can of course embed sway files, videos, et cetera, right? And, and again, like all we're really wanting to do here is to create a starting point, right? Because this is something that you should be building together. You want to get the investment of people who want to engage because they're going to tell you what they will come back for. And that's how you really get the engagement that you're looking for, all right? So as you have new resources and as people ask questions, right? You can build this out slowly and intentionally. Again, I'm not saying that you need to go and build something massive in order for this to be successful. In fact, I would argue that for a community that you build from the ground up to be successful, you need to get involvement of your people first, right? And have them really feel like they're playing a role in what this becomes. And if you do that, they will show up regularly and they'll bring their people too, right? Now, if you have a larger team, there are some other considerations that you might consider making. If you already have a Facebook group, I would consider mirroring some of the basic structures of your existing Facebook group and your member area first, right? So if you have sort of modules inside of your Facebook group, I would put those into lessons, right? If there are guidelines, if you've already got a stash of videos or something like that, that people reference. Like if you have a large group of people that are already using that group in a particular way, then I would, I would consider mirroring those uses inside of your, your Get Oiling vault, right? So you can upload those videos, graphics, documents, et cetera, so that they aren't lost to deletion, right? And also so that people can know that they can come and find what they need here simply and easily, right? I would also get your leaders involved, right? Again, you're going to get what you want out of this as a community if we get investment from your people early on, right? So I would invite you to bring your leaders in your team together with you to kind of organize how you'll roll out content, how you'll handle welcoming new members. And then here, you can also host live calls, right? So from inside of a vault in Get Oiling, you can have a recurring Zoom meeting link, right? So you don't have to come up with a new link to share. You just simply need to tell people to come log in and they can click and open and join the live Zoom call. And of course, Get Oiling includes Zoom, so you don't need to have a separate account for that. If you are recording to the cloud from Get Oiling Zoom, those videos go straight into Get Oiling where you can move them into your video manager and then easily embed those straight into your vault. So you don't have to worry about losing videos that you've made or live calls that you've hosted. And then those can then live inside of your vault forever, maybe putting them into a lesson. If you're talking about a particular product, you can then turn those lessons that you're creating. And just to come back here and show you when I'm talking about lessons. So like for instance, if, if I'm going to do an event this month about holiday DIYs and in this holiday, so I'm actually going to host a live Zoom. Obviously, I've already got a little bit of information here about holiday DIYs. Why not put the video recording for holiday DIYs in here as well, right? So this would be like a lesson and this is a class. This is a vault and this is a member area, right? So these are the features inside of Get Oiling and I will be showing you how to actually build some of these out here in just a moment, right? So always think about the content that you are actively always creating for your team and how that can be reusable, repurposable into the future. Because again, if you do a live in your Facebook group next week on a particular topic, that is gone forever after that day and probably after the next morning, right? If you did that the night, one night, the next morning, it's going to be hard for people to find, right? But if you take the, the quick video that you made that talks about that product and then you put it into an organized space where people can reference it forever, then you've got this fantastic encyclopedic resource that you've built together over time, right? And it isn't an encyclopedia right away. It's a small group of people celebrating one win after another together and building on those in perpetuity, right? So I want you to encourage your members to visit this new home regularly until it becomes the default. If you are someone who has a large team and you want to phase out your larger Facebook group, this is a multi-step approach that you're going to want to follow. I do talk about this in the How to Move Your Groups course that we offer with Get Oiling. And essentially what it looks like is you start building the basic structures so it's familiar enough to people who maybe semi-regularly visit your Facebook group. You get your team members who have teams involved so that they can be disseminating excitement and information and involvement, right? So that we are bringing everyone together, right? So we are, we all have our marching orders and we're bringing our people into the fold. There are a few things that you can do to help encourage people moving over from Facebook groups into your vaults. I particularly love, especially if you do a big build for a large team, you move a lot of information over. I like actually encouraging people and maybe you could do like a giveaway for this, maybe a drawing. You're going to want to tell them, your team, to say, all right, I am going to be giving away a free bottle of whatever this month or this much credit. I'm going to be giving away this much credit into your Young Living account. And it's going to be drawn randomly and you can get an entry by going and finding a product that you love mentioned inside of our member area and leave your own story or testimonial there, right? So if I want to say I use thieves, I'm going to look up thieves and then I'm going to go to All Things Thieves and then I'm going to come all the way down here to the bottom where I have discussion enabled and I'm going to leave my testimonial. Now, when you incentivize people to do this, this stays here. This remains here forever. And so that means that when somebody is like, you know what, I just got started with, with Young Living. I have the Thieves oil. I'm interested in these other products. They come over here, they read the, the information you have, maybe they watch the video, they click some links. But then when they scroll down, they see people like them who are a part of their community, who are sharing their experience with thieves as well. So if you do that, then you are both building some really powerful content for the community into the future and you are building that engagement, moving people over into your new space, all right? So let's go and get started with creating a member area for your people. Let me go over here and see, I've got a question in the Q and A here. Dana says, would you show how or where to transfer? Dana says, uh, would you show how or where to transfer my Facebook guides into the duplicate vault? So the guides, Dana, let me know in the chat, uh, are they, um, are they PDF guides or are they just written out in Facebook? That's going to, uh, kind of dictate how we set this up. So I'm going to actually pretend like I am starting from scratch. So let's start over here from the Get Oiling dashboard. Uh, it's a written post with graphic. Perfect. So what we're going to do is we're going to come all the way down here to member area. And first, if you haven't set up your member area yet, you're going to go click setup. Um, now I have completed the setup guide here. If you have not yet, then you can follow the steps that are here that help you to make sure that you've got this set up. Essentially, you're just going to name your member area. Um, if you're only going to use this member area to serve your Young Living customers, then this can be very Young Living centric, however you set this up. But if you are someone who offers more than just Young Living, maybe you offer coaching, consulting courses, et cetera. If you have a practice of some kind, then you want to brand the member area neutrally, right? So this is in this case, the holistic hideaway. Jane is a health coach that also, uh, shares Young Living, right? So this is something that's going to make sense to both her clients and to her Young Living customers. So you want to make sure your member area is set up first. Now, once we have our members area set up, we're going to create a vault. And I'm going to go ahead and click add to create a new vault. And you can give this the name of your team. Uh, if you already have one, name this the same as you have it named on Facebook, right? So if we are, uh, the energetic Oilers community, I'm going to name it that. Right? Um, I'm going to go ahead. I'm not putting any content in here yet. Under entry settings, uh, I'm going to say, uh, yeah, we'll leave it at visit. That's fine. The short summary, just to show you guys what this means. Let me come back over here and show you this short vault summary. It's going to be over here like so, you know, holistic hideaway, uh, and I'm actually going to grab this here. So member exclusive, because this is for our customers. Uh, get equipped with the education and support you need to discover abundant wellness. Um, this is a, a default system default message. You don't need to change this. If you'd like to, you can see what the campaign looks like, make a copy of it and make edits to it if you want. You could ignore this pre-purchase because we're not selling this. Under branding, you could choose a cover photo, you could choose a main photo. I'm not going to do any of that yet. All right. So what I am going to do here is say, um, so you know, when someone enters a Facebook group, maybe there's information about information up at the top. So this is what we would put here. So, um, I'm actually going to have right with AI write this for me. Write, uh, a welcome message to show at the top of my customer facing member area vault on my website. Our team is called the energetic Oilers. It would help if I spelled that correctly, energetic Oilers. So I'm going to have it write for me. I'll add that to the editor. Perfect. And I don't need any of these external calls to action that it gave me. There we go. All right. So perfect. I'm going to go ahead and hit create. And we can go ahead and take a look at this. So I don't have any images here. Um, I just have the name. I've got a welcome message and there are no contents in here yet. This is a really fantastic starting point. Now there's one more thing that I want to recommend that you do. Uh, and, and if this is the only thing you do, then you have done something fantastic and you can get started. I'm going to go create a discussion room. Right? So, uh, this would be a community discussion. All right. Let me find my, let me see. All right. Write a welcome message for the energetic Oilers community message, uh, let's see, community discussion room. Include basic guidelines. And encourage visitors to introduce themselves. I love that AI can just write it for you if you feel stuck. Dana, I will be showing you exactly how to get that set up here in just a second. All right. So I'm going to go add this to editor. Beautiful. Again, really simple, simple and, and along the lines of what you might put at the top of a Facebook group, right? Like here are our posting guidelines. I'm going to click create. Again, if you wanted to brand it, just to come back here, if you wanted to brand it, you can absolutely, uh, add images, right? Cause like, if we look at this one here, um, we've got, you can see there's an image here. There's a background image here in our discussion room. There's something very similar and these are of course all created in Canva, uh, not necessary, but certainly something that you can do. Let me go ahead and refresh this here. You can see our community discussion is already here. There's our guidelines and people can start communicating. Now, if you want to take those, um, your, your guides that you have in Facebook and move them over into your, um, into your new community here, we're going to click add content. And I'm going to add a class. All right. So I'm going to, oh, you know what? I think I have too many classes. I need to go delete one. Uh, this, uh, this particular account does not have unlimited vaults and classes. So let me just go open up my classes here real quick. Cause I do use this as a dummy account. Um, let me see, I'm going to delete this one. Okay. Let me refresh this real quick and then we can get started with that. All right. So I'm going to click add content. I'm going to create a new class. All right. So here we go. I'm going to actually use, uh, from my own outline. And I like using from my own outline when you already have content somewhere else that you're moving over. Uh, now you could start with a new empty class, or you can actually have AI write it for you if you wanted to start from scratch. But since Dana asked about how to move her existing Facebook guides over, I'm going to click from my own outline. And I'm going to call this, um, uh, maybe getting started. Right? And I know that my first guide is named, uh, how to place an order, right? You can put a little description in here. If it's just the, the copy, if it's just text, you can actually go ahead and place that in here as well. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and add another lesson. Uh, this one is going to be uh, how to, um, reach support. I'm going to add another one. Schedule a wellness scan. And maybe I will offer another, um, uh, join our weekly newsletter, get our weekly tips, something like that. You can go ahead and put information in here. It will just carry over. Um, but it's just a really quick and easy way to just like drop and copy paste all of the stuff that you want right into here. So I'm going to go click create class. Um, and yeah, we can go create the class. And now you can see it's already in this structure and then I can just go in and edit each of these as I want to, right? So how to place an order. I, uh, I can go into here and add a video. I could add an image. You know, you can a- adjust any of the copy, uh, that you have here. Uh, Lynn, if you'd like, um, I can bring you out to chat here in just a bit and open your member area and we can look at that together. If you'd like, just let me know, uh, just say so in the chat and I will bring you out, uh, here in just a moment. And we can take a look together. But yeah, Dana, what I would do here is obviously you've titled, uh, the guide. And then you can put, uh, all of the, the verbiage that you have for the guide here. You can put, uh, you could add images, you could add additional videos. Uh, you can add downloads. So if there are PDFs, you can connect those here. Uh, and then once you save that, all of those are here. Uh, and I'm actually just going to come right back over here to our energetic Oilers community. And you can see that we have our discussion room and then we've got that getting started lesson where you can see that they can go through all of that content, right? Uh, yes, the guides could go into a class. That's right. Yeah. So anything that you would want people to be able to reference either in sequential order. So that would be this one here in order. Um, or if you just want to have them all unlocked. And I think for guides, unless what you're doing with your guides and your groups are meant to be, you must finish the first before the second and the third, et cetera. Um, you could just have them all be unlocked. And so what that would look like is when we come over here, all of these are now open. Now we do have a feature inside of these, um, these classes to, uh, establish modules. Uh, so we'll, let's just say for instance, uh, we're going to call this get to know uh, Young Living. And I'm going to edit the module on this one. And this one's going to be called, um, ordering basics. And I'm going to also make that one ordering basics. And then I'm going to call this one, um, using your products. And you can actually see that we, uh, you see that that now shows up here, right? Uh, so if I save this, and I don't think for some reason, my ordering basics stuck here. Update. Beautiful. Okay. Here we go. Uh, so now when I save this, you can actually see that we are going from just four of these, uh, or you know, yeah, four lessons here to lessons that are divided up into categories. Right? So, uh, so yeah, you can, you put your guides into here. So depending on how you're using your guides, uh, you might break them down into, uh, categories or even subcategories. Cause you can actually do, uh, if you edit the module here, you can do a module and a, a sort of subcategory of the module as well. All right. Uh, so let me see what kind of questions we have. Lynn, if you're still here, I'd be happy to bring you out and chat about your member area together. Um, and Dana, if that answers your questions, uh, great. If not, let me know. Be happy to chat with you here as well. I do want to really quickly bring, uh, Kelly out to chat because you did sign up for a review. Um, you mentioned, uh, Kelly, uh, in your request for today that you had some issues with, uh, maybe some contacts, uh, that you uploaded from project broadcast. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah. So, um, I, I was chatting with Greg about this before the call started. About how many of those contacts do you have that are like the no information contacts from that, that upload?
Well, I did actually go through and manually delete them. I had probably about thirty or forty. What, what actually, yeah, what happened was, so my mistake, I was importing contacts from project broadcast and I didn't want to have their names, you know, like at the bottom, you can choose like what fields do override and which ones don't. I didn't want the names to be updated because in project broadcast, I had a lot of like last name first. You know, so that it was sending out like to the person's last name. So I didn't, so I had corrected that in Get Oiling and I didn't want to bring that over. And then I also unchecked phone number, thinking that I don't want it to override the phone number in Get Oiling. But what ended up happening was it brought over all these contacts with no phone numbers, no name, you know, no name, no email, no phone number. And so then when I said to remove duplicates based on phone number, it couldn't do that. Right?
Got you. But you manually deleted those?
I manually deleted those, but I still have an issue where I have people that, cause then I read, I went in and I, I basically deleted all of those that I had brought in because I tagged them. Um, but I still have, so, so then I re, I made a mess. I re-imported my contacts again. Um, but I, I don't know what I did that time, but I, so I still have some duplicate contacts where I have the person in there with their, with no phone number, but it like an email address. And then I have another contact for them with the phone number. So I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to just merge those once they've already, okay. Yeah.
So a- about how like, is, are we still thinking maybe like forty or so contact range?
Oh, no. Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out because, um, it's looking like I have like twenty-three hundred contacts now. Um, and I think I only had like fifteen hundred before. So.
Okay. Okay. So let me, I, I want to take a look here real quick. I can't share my screen because I don't, obviously don't want to, um, don't want to compromise any of your, uh, your contacts here. But so basically what you're saying is, is that you've got duplicates where you've got, um, you've got the same people, you just have separate entries for their email versus their phone?
Correct. Yep. And in some cases, there's no, like I have a person I'm looking at right now. There's no, on one of her records, there's no email or a phone number, but there's a bunch of tags, right? So, um, and I'm just, I'm super nervous about deleting people now because I don't want to accidentally delete the wrong one. And then her next record has the phone number. Um, yeah.
Okay. So I think so this, this, it, it sounds like this might be like a majority of your list is, is like you've, you've got the, the phone number from project broadcast. You've got the email from somewhere else.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay. So if you run a VO file upload and deduplicate, then if their number that they were receiving texts for you on is the same as the one that's in their VO file, then the system is going to take care of, of a good amount of that for you. Um, yeah. So I would, I, I, I don't know if you've, you've done a VO, VO upload and, and duplicate. Okay.
Yep. Um, okay. So I'll do that. And what about the ones that just, just have, um, like just a phone number? But not all of them.
Yeah. So it's, so it's going to be kind of normal for, for you to have some separation there because you know, for some people, they'll have different phone numbers that they use for different purposes. Or they'll sign up with one thing somewhere and something else another place. But one thing that you could do is actually send out a, um, you could send out a message and maybe have people, uh, update their information with you. Uh, and I think we did a training on this relatively recently. Um, let me look this up real quick and I'll let you know. Cause we've done like an email preferences. Yeah, here we go. I did this two months ago. I'm going to pop this link here into the chat. Uh, but what we did on this training, uh, is we showed how to create a page in Get Oiling where you can ask people to specify, I want to get emails from you. I want to get texts from you, or I only want one or the other. Um, I want happy mail. Here's my address. I want to learn about this thing or that thing. Um, so that could also help you as well because that can help kind of bring, you know, if they are, if the phone number is already in the system, but they're also putting their email next to it. Now these things kind of start to come together and make sense.
Love it. Okay. Perfect.
Yeah. All right. So I hope that helps. And, um, I, I, again, for obvious reasons, I can't like show the screen and work through the process with you here on the call for the sake of your contacts. Uh, but if you run into any issues, um, there are options that our team has on the backend as well. Uh, we're sort of mass deleting things, uh, you know, might be more possible. And Greg obviously understands how to handle data well than, you know, better than the average person. So, uh, so definitely consider reaching out to the team for that as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So, uh, Cornelia has a question, Allison does as well. And I saw Tina in the chat. This is very time sensitive. Want to, I want to talk about this here real quick. Um, what's your strategy for pop-up events like Black Friday? Monthly gifts with purchase, the things that are time sensitive? Um, where's the best place to get the details to the most people, to people, but not necessarily store them after the time has passed? Uh, so in Get Oiling, you can absolutely have inside of your member area. And let me actually just get back logged into an account that I can, uh, demonstrate on. Uh, so I have shown in the past, and I've kind of moved away from, um, from recommending this practice. Um, because it's time consuming and I think that sending out newsletters and emails are better for this for you anyway, uh, because I don't want you to be duplicating what Young Living is doing. Right? So Young Living has a, has a, no matter what market you're in, if they've got a gift with purchase, they've got a website page that has all the information and that website URL does not change from month to month, right? So that link can just be in your member area and then you can send out an email or whatever and say, hey, remember here's a gift with purchase. And you can be talking about these products throughout the month, of course, in the discussion room, which does send out email notifications if people have those notifications turned on. Um, and those, those of course stay there in the chat as well. Uh, but just going back over here to, to this discussion room, you could have a bulletin board type of page here where maybe you have like Grow Workspace used to do Sway newsletters. So, you know, we could embed some information like that here. Here's what's coming up this month. Uh, sign up for the team newsletter. Like you could have sort of a bulletin board page inside of the vault for this purpose. Um, but that is a lot of work. And again, at the end of the day, um, you know, Young Living gift with purchase uh, is a uh, here we go, gift with purchase. There you go. It's right here. Depending on your market, obviously. Um, you know, this is a link that you could just, you know, point people to, right? Um, that monthly PV promo. Um, that monthly PV promo page. So um, so yeah, I would have this link everywhere. So put it into the um into the email templates that you create so that you're sending people to the Gift With Purchase page from your, your customer emails. Um, obviously talk about those things as you'd like to uh throughout the month. Uh, but I would, I would actually argue that email is going to be uh the better way to reach people with immediacy. Now, if you are doing some kind of like an event, like so you mentioned a Black Friday, having the information go out about that uh via um via email would be good. Also placing the information about it at the top of the vault. So going back over here, so like right here in this space, this welcome to our oily community, you could put more stuff up here, right? So you could say, month of November, here are the details. Go to the discussion room to participate and then they go to the discussion room down here, right? And so anything that that should be, you know, like people are posting, we're commenting, and if that's a part of the event, that would take place in the chat here, but you can have the guidelines for it up here. You certainly should be emailing them as well. All right. Um, let me see. Uh, Cornelius says, is it possible within one vault to have the first couple of lessons free? But when it gets to more deeper information, they have to purchase it. Would that be built into classes or can that be organized within one online class? So uh, so this would be using a vault for like a course or something like this. Um, so that would be a two vault prospect, actually, Cornelius. Uh, because when someone has access to a vault, they have access to everything that's in that vault, right? So there's no further paid gating from inside the vault in terms of the information that it stores. If it's in there, it's accessible, uh, provided that it's visible. Uh, so if you wanted to use like a free class inside of a vault as a way to sell a paid class, then you would create the free class vault and you would create the paid class vault. Uh, and then maybe after they've completed the the final lesson or something like that inside of the free class vault, uh, we are sending them to the sales page for the paid one. All right. Uh, Allison says, I'm doing two to three holiday DIY open houses. Awesome. Uh, is there a way to do just one event and they can choose from three options? It will be attached to three different campaigns, same information, just different dates. I mean, I would just create an event for each of these and put them in your events manager and get oiling. And um, and they can just sign up for whichever one they want. Right? Um, yeah, so that would be the three different events. And then you would just have the really simple campaigns that go with those that say, hey, you're signed up. You know, hey, here's a reminder. Um, I don't, well, so the other option, I guess. Um, but you're still going to have to create the three different campaigns. Um, like if you're going to create the three different campaigns, like it's just a couple more minutes to just go ahead and create those as separate events. But what you could do if you wanted to, and you certainly, you certainly could, this is certainly doable, uh, is in your page, so you would actually, instead of creating an event in Get Oiling for this, you would use a page. Uh, and in this page, under the um under the settings, under leads, fields and booking, um, we would maybe have them select, so um uh choose your event date. Uh, and this is going to be a dropdown list pick one. And we would have a option one. This would need to have a tag in a campaign. Option two, again, tag in a campaign for that date. So date one, date two, date three, right? Um, and then we would need to make this a required question. Right? So um, so when they actually go to register, let me find if I, see if I can find a a call to action button on this page. Here we go. Um, but it's actually not one here. Anyway, so you you see where I'm going with that though, right? Um, you don't have to use events in that case. You can use a single page. And then you can um, depending on which of the selections that they make, which dates that they choose, they can RSVP for one of those three. You just need to make sure that um you have the tag for that event, the um campaign for that event attached to those options. Okay, let me see. Um, is there an events video? Just started using them. Haven't added campaigns to it yet. We have a lot of events videos. In fact, every uh quarterly content planning session that we do, or seasonal content planning session that we do, I demo the setup of events. Um, you can search for events actually in our um here, let me come over here and show you. Uh, if you want to find anything, any topic about anything, you can go over here to the Success Academy. And you can go to live training and replays and type in event. And you can find, and our events feature hasn't really changed much at all, so um but here, look, just a couple of weeks ago, using live events to grow Young Living. I'm going to pop this into the chat. No, I don't want to do that. I want to do that. Okay. All right, here we go. It's for you. Um, all right. So create a page with three lead options, but I could add one event pointing to that page. Correct. Yes. Yeah. So you would turn in the event that you create. You put the description for the event because it's the same thing three times. And then you just put in the description, you know, click the button below to pick your date and register and you send them over to that page. That's right. You got it. All right. Uh, Dana says, I've been recording a four-minute radio show for a year now. Ooh, I'd like to include these in the vault, but I'm concerned about file space if I upload them with a URL link piece sufficient. So um, if they're already hosted somewhere, uh, you can absolutely embed those um you know, a player for that. If it's a a video file or what have you, if you have a URL for it, it can be uh added or included there. Um, depending on what you're, like if it's a radio show that's meant for public consumption, I would actually advocate for using your blog for this purpose, right? If it's not just for your customers, but it, you know, if it's, if it's for the world to be able to discover, I would use your blog as a way uh to get more visibility on that radio show, treat it like a podcast, you know? Uh, and if it's a YouTube, yes, if it's a YouTube channel, you could link to that in your private member area, yes. The the one thing though, Karen, if if you are using YouTube to host your videos, uh, understand if you're using a keyword like Young Living, uh, there is a strong likelihood that you could, or really anything, if you embed a YouTube video, it automatically wants to go and play other stuff or suggest other things after the fact that might not be your videos. They might not be on topic. And very importantly, if they use the Young Living keyword, we risk people who are out there using uh Young Living's name negatively to boost their content, right? So I I I would be mindful about that and know that you do have the option to host your videos with Kit Oiling, especially if you want to create a zone for your people to stay in and not get distracted from. And that really is kind of one of the biggest, aside from like privacy and control, reasons to move your group off of Facebook, right? Is that Facebook is inherently wildly distracting, full of disinformation. And truly, like the platform itself is antagonistic to the work that we do, right? It is built to be antagonistic to the work that we do. So um, so if you, if we can take what we have to say and put it in a space where the only voices are that are in there are voices of the community and the things that we've curated to be there, we can provide control over the experience that we want people to receive, which is really not something that we have any handle on at all if people are accessing our content on YouTube or on Facebook or other social media platforms. Uh, but yeah, absolutely. You can link to anything from inside of your vault. Um, you can embed players and things like that inside of your vault. And if these are files that you would want to have playable only inside the vault, you can host these things uh in Get Oiling and have those things be accessible there. Um, let me see, turn off registration. So that is something using that page option, Allison, because it's not paid. Um, the way that I showed you, I don't know that there's a way to do that without just going in and and turning it off, right? Um, so you would have to go in and and make that modification there. Uh, Dana says YouTube is a 2026 goal. Awesome. I posted an expanded version of the show on my blog post. Are you suggesting a separate blog post with a show link and recording? Yes, yeah, yeah. Use your blog uh to actually promote the content that you're putting out there. I'm trying to remember. I know we did this on the Attract Well platform, but did we talk about? I don't think we talked about podcasting on the Get Oiling platform. Uh, no, we didn't. Uh, so let me find um I'm going to find something for you here real quick. Um, this is for our sister platform that is this same, just not oiled. Um, and you can kind of play around with what's there. Again, this is a couple of years old, but it is still very um it's it's current enough. All right. So Dana, this is going into the chat there for you. Um, yeah, absolutely. Use your blog as a place to embed a podcast player, to embed your YouTube videos. And then in your show notes, in your YouTube description, put a link to the blog post. So it's a really great way to boost uh traffic to your website and just to your content generally. These are called backlinks. Uh, and and they do play a role in you being discoverable long term with your content. Um, all right. Can you go over quickly how to save and then use a block template? I'm finding I'm redoing it every campaign, even though I did create the template. Um, I don't get the start fresh and reload options when opening. Uh, Lisa, thank you for calling that out. I will be checking on that as soon as we hop off of this call. Thank you. All right. Let's go take a look here real quick for you. Um, Allison, we'll talk about this email template. Okay. So over here under email templates, uh, the saved sections that we're talking about reusing uh are are going to be right over here. And you can, you don't edit them from here. You can just rename them or delete them. So these are the things, if you're going to be taking like our weekly wellness tips that we give you and you want to swap in sections to make it your own, uh, then you're going to be taking and saving sections to here that you can then pop in to your future content, right? Now, these are saved sections. These are the actual templates themselves. Okay? So when you go to create a new template, you can start from an existing template, right? So those are the ones that we've given you, that the ones that you've created. You could also X out of here and start from scratch. And it's just going to have a text block and it's going to have your signature as a starting point. And then you, you would actually use this to write a new email. Now, if what you're doing is taking the campaigns that we are giving you and turning like and and adjusting those to your purposes. So if I go over, I'm I'm going to close out of here. If I go and I find my uh November, uh, and actually next week, we're going to be going over December's weekly wellness tips. So here is our block format for November. And uh, we can take a quick look at what's here. This is al- already actually been modified, right? Because when we give them to you, they're in a green color. Uh, but what you can do is open it up. And you're not actually going to be using a new template here. You're going to edit the email. And you're going to go to your saved sections and find that divider that you want to use. Go to your saved sections and drag in the social links section that you want to use, right? Um, you're going to click on the background and change it to the color that you want it to be, right? And obviously, hopefully you have yours saved here um in your preset colors that you can set up in the mic colors and fonts and get oiling. Uh, so if you are, if this is a a project of modifying these messages that we give you to send out as tips, uh, then what you're going to be doing is not using templates, you're going to be using saved sections. Uh, you save your colors by going over here to colors and fonts, brand colors, and adding all the colors that you want to use here. Obviously, these are going to show up on your website, but these custom colors uh are going to be in addition. So if you don't want those to necessarily be your font colors, et cetera, that is a way to have those uh there and readily available. Um, and yeah, Lisa, nine forty-three PM is definitely not correct uh for the call, so I am going to uh, I'm I'm going to take a look at that and and send a message out to you guys if need be. Um, Dana says, I also discovered that AI can write um with SEO. Do you consider these accurate? Haven't started doing that. Uh, we've done some SEO trainings, Dana, and while AI can follow some pretty basic uh SEO best practices, I think it's really important to remember that AI is um a tool that works well if you know how to do the thing that you're having the tool make, right? Like I could, I could get a really great uh power tool, like I could go to the hardware store today, I get a really great power tool. It doesn't mean I'm going to be able to build a nice house, right? Like, but but if you put a, you know, that really great power tool in the hands of a skilled carpenter, he can build a great house, maybe better than he would have if he was using hand tools. And that's kind of what AI is, right? It can help us do what we know how to do a little bit better. And so what I would encourage you to do if you want to use AI for really anything, but for SEO in in this case, is that first, maybe use AI to explore SEO as a strategy for yourself so that you can identify things like your keywords and just sort of what you're doing strategically. And then when you're prompting AI to write content for you, you're saying, use these keywords, follow these practices, right? So have it teach you what you need to know so that you can teach it what the output is that you want it to be, is basically how I would do that. I wouldn't just like blindly rely on it being correct. Because it can follow SEO best practices, but if they're not your SEO best practices according to your goals, then what's the point? You could have just written it yourself. Okay, um, thank you guys for all this. Uh, Karen says, I'm looking at using my Get Oiling space to combine my non-YL stuff. You already combined but separate, just wondering if I should switch platforms. Uh, no, I mean, you've, with Young Living, we've got folks who put their chiropractic practice out front and they serve Young Living on the back, right? Uh, we've got folks who are just all Young Living all day, right? And and that's fine too. Uh, you, you can be all of the things with us. You can manage your domains with us. You can send from multiple email addresses now with us. Uh, no, you're just getting an extraordinarily good deal and it's just all built on the foundation of uh tools that you need to serve your Young Living customers in a place that, you know, you're, you're not going to find those tools anywhere else. They don't exist. But Greg built them. Thanks, Greg. All right. Thank you guys for your time uh and for being here. We'll be back same time next week. We're going to talk about uh our done-for-you content for December. Have a great week, everybody.